How about, let's open first and do roll call. Terry, do we go straight into housing first?
Every day of my life.
Yeah, okay. Check that. We go straight into housing first, so you start off whenever you're ready.
Madam Clerk, can we call roll for Housing Authority, please?
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Solario.
Here.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Klumpenstein.
Here. We'll start with oral communications. I don't have any pink cards, so seeing none of those, we'll move on to consent items. 2A, receive and file minutes from the meeting held on October 24th, 2017, and 2B, receive and file the Housing Authority Status Report from October 2017. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve those two.
Is it not working? Mr. Bowie?
It's not coming up.
No.
No, not working?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Commissioner Beard.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Solario.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Moving on, we have a public hearing this evening, 3A, approval of the revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan, and I think we have a staff report for that.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the revised Housing Authority Administrative Plan. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the Housing Authority to adopt an administrative plan. The purpose of the plan is to outline the Authority's policies and procedures in the administration of the housing program. The plan has undergone numerous updates and revisions to accommodate regulatory changes in the program, to improve procedures, and to clarify policies. This revised administrative plan updates the Housing Authority address, organizational chart, mobility agreement, and also includes language responding to new HUD policies such as calculations of earned income disallowance, qualifying independent students under the age of 24, incoming portability, and Violence Against Women Act. The public hearing has been properly noticed on October 4th and 11th. It is recommended that the Housing Commission conduct the public hearing and approve the revised administrative plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Motion to approve the...
Well, we have to open it up for a public hearing. I don't have any pink cards, is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask my fellow Commissioners if they have any questions for anyone.
Okay, now, motion. For approval?
I second that.
We'll try this again. Commissioner Beard.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner... Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Solario.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Next is matters for Chair Commissioners and Directors, anyone have any comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. The next meeting will be Tuesday, January 23rd, here at the Community Meeting Center.
Okay, we will now convene the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Can I ask Kingsley Okuriki to lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilmember Kim Nguyen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Gracious Lord, we thank you especially this holiday period for the times we have spent together as a Garden Grove family. For the gifts we seldom notice, and for the bounty we often take for granted. We thank you especially for the services of all of our elected officials. We ask you, Lord, to guide them as they lead and shape the future of Garden Grove. Help all of us to see each other's service as complimentary. All this we ask in thy glorious name. Amen.
Put your right hand over your hand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, please be seated. All right, moves on to presentations. We have a community spotlight in recognition of the 2017 Ms. Garden Grove, Ms. Mendoza, and her Courts of Honor.
Okay, Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize the 2017 Ms. Garden Grove and Ms. Garden Grove's outstanding teen and their Courts of Honor. They have proudly served and represented the city since last October, and recently passed on their crowns to the 2018 winners. As an official preliminary to the Miss America Pageant, the Ms. Garden Grove Pageant distributes over $5,000 in scholarships to local young ladies each year. In addition to performing in a talent competition, each contestant promotes their community service platform based on a current issue she feels is important. I would like to call forward all of the honorees, present, and give a brief introduction of each. We ask that each of you, when I call your name, please stay up front, so we can take a group photograph afterwards. Ms. Garden Grove, Ms. Mendoza. Ms. Mendoza, a proud almonai of Garden Grove High School, attended Cal State Fullerton, where she obtained a bachelor's degree in communications with a concentration in public relations. Ms. Mendoza represented Garden Grove in 2013, when she was crowned Ms. Garden Grove. Her passion for public service led her to represent her hometown again this year. This past June, Ms. Mendoza placed in the top 15 at Miss California. During her year of service, Ms. Mendoza was an ambassador for the Children's Miracle Network, and she advocated for her platform, prevention and awareness of driving under the influence. Ms. Mendoza was sponsored by Garden Grove's X Lodge, number 1952. Representing the city and community with Ms. Garden Grove were her court members, Maricel Gibson. Kylie Horroyd. Is Kylie here? And Mayiki Prounder. And how about Maricel... Okay, Maricel Gibson, she's not here, but Maricel Gibson is currently attending Biola University. She was sponsored by Garden Grove Host Lions Club. The City Council would also like to recognize Ms. Garden Grove's outstanding teen, Hannah Asher, and Teen Princesses. Catherine Cuervo. Fatima Oliveras. Kylie Wilson. Kylie here? She's not here, all right. Hannah is currently attending Pacifica High School. This past June, she placed in the top 13 and received a preliminary talent award at Miss California Outstanding Teen. During her year of service, Hannah was an ambassador for the Children's Miracle Network, and she raised funds for her platform, childhood cancer awareness. Hannah was sponsored by Dance Air Dance Academy. Catherine Cuervo is currently attending Pacifica High School. She was sponsored by Foundation's Dance Company. Fatima Oliveras is currently attending Rancho Alameda's High School. She was sponsored by Garden Grove Body Shop, Grove Body Shop. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present the Ms. Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant, outgoing title holders, and their courts, with certificates and mementos in recognition of their 2017 reign. The City Council thanks you, and we hope that your aspirations lead you to recognized success. Congratulations. She works for the city? She works for the city? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought it said little family. Yeah. Okay. I think there's two. Yeah, did he take this? Oh!
Oh, there we go. So, on behalf of the Ms. Garden Grove Scholarship Organization, myself, Hannah, and our Court of Honor, we can't thank the city enough, the community members, and our sponsors for helping us grow as women, for helping us achieve our own ambitions of obtaining a higher education. From my own personal experience, I've received $10,467. So, this organization really is a true testament to what it can do for young women like me and young women that are standing behind me today. So, we just want to say thank you, and thank you for taking us in and really supporting this program, because this program would not be successful whatsoever if it wasn't for you guys. So, we're just very, very grateful, and you guys have really, really great new title holders, Sarah and Sophie, and I look forward for you guys to work with them, and just thank you for taking us.
All righty. With that, we will go on to oral communications. I do have a number of cards, starting with Elaine Caton.
Hello, everybody. My name's Elaine Caton. I lived in Garden Grove for quite a while, and I'm here because I'm tired of having people going through our containers, stealing from our containers. I've called the police numerous times, many times, different police officers, when they do come into the area, have told me in no uncertain terms that I had no rights, that there is no law to prevent people from going in, that I don't own the containers. I pay taxes, I pay for the privilege of having my containers picked up and emptied, and by people coming into the neighborhood, they're stealing not only from me but from the city, because this will cause my rates to go up for trash Holloway, and it also affects the city, because they lose credit for them, for the missing recyclables. I've spent quite a bit of time going through the internet, looking at different cities across California and the states, and many, many cities have put out ordinances, and they do not want people stealing. They don't want them going through. I love this particular one, because they actually printed out a sign that can be put up anywhere, and I don't see why it couldn't happen here in Garden Grove. I had one officer say to someone, there was an ordinance, many of these people that are coming into the neighborhoods will be claiming that they're just taking out of there to recycle. I have witnessed different people actually looking through papers to find personal information. I don't like that. I've witnessed people going into people's yards, trespassing. They didn't know that these people were coming into their yards. I'm lucky, my gates are locked, but they can walk there and take anything they want. We don't know if they're breaking into the house. I've had neighbors' homes on my street broken into, they'll go through the garage door, the door to the house may not be locked, they go in, and when they hear the garage door open, they break through the glass windows and go out over the fence. I believe that the police officers need to understand that we have a right to protect ourselves, and they also have to know that there are ordinances, laws, whatever you want to call them, stating that people don't have a right to go through our things, just because they're on the street, unless somebody puts a sign out and says free. I've witnessed trucks, men and women, many, many times, and finally, in my old age, I finally started to yell at a particular person who comes regularly into the neighborhood. She was just one of many, and she carries a stick, which means I'm a little nervous about this, because you never know if they're gonna hit us. But I feel they're casing the neighborhood as well, and I'd really like to see the police officers cite these people, and maybe if they do it a few times, they'll get the message. Our neighborhood, our city, is not open to just being taken advantage of, and we don't need to be walked all over constantly. And I'd like to turn these in to you, to Mr. Beard, and I think this one sign was really a good idea. I like the idea to put something on the cans themselves, or polls in the neighborhoods, so that they're warned, and then if they don't listen, then the police can come in. And I think we need the officers. I really think by an officer saying, "You can't do this, and I'm citing you," will get the message more than... Maybe code enforcement would be like a second choice. My personal choice is an officer. My aunt was one of the first women police officers in Ohio, and I have great respect for them, but I really think by having a police officer say something makes a big difference in getting the message across and hopefully putting a stop to it. Any questions? No?
Thank you. No, it's just oral communications. It's just you guys. It's not a dialogue. Thank you. Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I also want to address 5A and 7A, and I think I can link them. It's not science fiction. 5A, I believe, let me look at my agenda here, goes to the synchronization of the traffic lights, right? 7A is about why we don't keep people from stealing our recyclables. I have yet to see any cost analysis of what benefit would accrue to the city and the citizens of Garden Grove for paying almost $500,000 to sync a bunch of traffic lights that I'm never gonna use during their synchronization period. On the other hand, I don't see anything quantified anywhere that says how much we're losing by people stealing the recyclables. I know we're losing money, even for the city's only losing $1,000 a month. You're trying to tell me there's some city agency that somewhere can't use $12,000 in their budget? If that's the case, then reduce my property taxes if you don't need the money. But I don't see anything anywhere that says what spending $500,000 to synchronize a traffic light, how's that gonna benefit me or anybody else in here? Unless you're commuting during the time period that those traffic lights are synchronized, I don't really care. And I fail to see why spending almost $500,000 is gonna benefit anybody in the city unless you communicate during those synchronized hours. On the other hand, if we put up the signs as a previous speaker's suggestion, I've seen exactly what she's talking about. Hey, I'm not a small person, and I've had people that I tell, "Get out of my garbage", think that they were gonna threaten me. Well, that ain't gonna work. I'll tell you that right now. So, we do have a problem. I run people out, and they just, they don't care. They'll wait till you turn your back, and here they come again. And I have called the Garden Grove Police, because they are stealing an asset. If it wasn't an asset, we wouldn't be recycling it, okay? So, I'd like to see the city quantify how much we get, how much we lose, and why it's okay to lose that money. That's the same thing, same fact I've made about the short-term rentals, from the ones across the street from us, and I understand they've now been fined $1,000, we'll see how long they stay in business. If we're losing that 14% on $1,000 a week, that's a lot of money. Well, that's the same thing we're losing on the trash, not trash, the recyclables. Why is it not quantified, telling us how much we believe is being stolen, how much the city is getting, how much we could potentially get, and why we don't need the money? And I would also like to see it spelled out. And I would also like to see it spelled out. It's nowhere in any of these reports, nowhere that I could find online for the city, why we're paying $500,000 to synchronize traffic lights that benefit Anaheim and Orange and all these other cities. I don't care if they're traffic synchronized. I truly don't. And on Catala Avenue, we're paying that much money to synchronize two lights? Oh, please. Garden Grove Boulevard, I can understand why we'd synchronize maybe a little bit of Garden Grove Boulevard, but the other 19 miles of it, I couldn't care less. $500,000 is a lot of money. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Flores.
Good evening, council staff. I'm Tony Flores. Just to, I guess, finish up on what the last two speakers said. If you go back and look at the minutes or the history of the council meetings, I've raised this issue a number of times regarding people taking our trash, our recyclables in particular. I'm sure, or at least I hope, that most of you, if not all of you, have read the trash contract in it. It talks about the recyclables, and how it's supposed to be used to keep our costs of our services down. Anybody read that? Sounds, looks like a yes. Okay, all right, well, so to make sure, because when I've called in the past, I've been told to by the same thing from the Police Department, well, they're not going to enforce that, but our trash contract says something completely different, and hopefully you folks will maybe touch on that tonight, maybe even hopefully fix it. Regarding the quality of life, so you may have seen the emails that I've sent. I never know if you receive them, because nobody responds here. You're not going to have a problem putting out campaign flyers or contacting people at that point, but when a citizen tries to contact you folks, you're non-grotta there. You can't find you anywhere. Not an answer from any of you. But regarding the sales of cars on the streets, I was told through Mr. Sandoval that that's a potential violation of the First Amendment, and people can express themselves or their freedom of speech by putting their cars out for sale using our streets as car lots, which is interesting, because last year, when I was talking about crime, three of you shut me down and violated my freedom of speech. Now, if I'd brought in a car for sale, maybe I'd have gotten away with that, but we're talking about crime, which was out of control. We're having a problem right now. Most of you have probably heard like the track there between Chapman, excuse me, Chase and Topaz, north of Lamson. A few months ago, we had an incident where the citizens had to subdue a couple of thieves, beat the hell out of them, I heard. And then recently, on Dudman there, a person broke into a home and sexually assaulted an elderly female. What are we doing? It looks like we're not doing anything. This, you know, you folks look weak when it comes to crime. Maybe you're not, but it sure looks like it. We got our stats. You guys can get a little bit stronger. As far as representation, I'm a citizen that doesn't have representation. I don't get a call back from Mr. Beard. You have my number, you have my email, but you don't communicate whatsoever. Mr. Lowenthal, my congressman, he won't talk to me, because I voted for Trump. So, where does that leave a person like me? Well, maybe I have to run this time, take out the papers, do it early. Do I run for mayor? Do I run council? I don't know. But you folks need to get up off your duffs and do something. It's great to have all these photographic opportunities, but that does nothing for the citizens, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. At the last meeting, there was a special announcement celebrating the promotion of a man into the position of Director of Community Development. I think it's marvelous, but I think there's one thing that some people tend to overlook. I call it the X factor. X meaning experience. It goes without saying that somebody working their way up through the ranks of city government has to have experience in a lot of areas, and I'm sure that the gentleman that was promoted has that experience, and that is the reason he was given that position. Now, one of the things that is extremely important in any job is volunteering. Now, a lot of times, people say, "Oh, well, I don't want to volunteer, because I'm not going to get anything for it." When I got out of the Army, I went to the Employment Office, and they said, "We have an opening for you. It's a company called Fedco, and we have an opening for a stock clerk. Pays a dollar an hour." I said, "Fine, I'll take it." Thirty-three years later, I retired as a store superintendent. How was I able to achieve that? Because every opportunity I had for volunteering, I took it, no matter what the job was. "I'll do it, sure. I may not get paid extra for it, but I'll do it," and eventually, positions would open up. Who do we have that's haven't experienced doing this? Ah, he volunteered for this before. He knows what to do. I got the job. I kept moving on up. So, the thing that I need to emphasize is that young people need to learn the value of volunteering. When I talk to the mediation students at Chapman University, I tell them, "Look for every chance you have to volunteer, because someday, somebody's going to look around to find that experience, and if you have it, you have a leg up on everyone else." That applies also to the students we have here. I encourage them to volunteer. Councilman Beard, your sons are in the Boy Scouts. They know the value of volunteering because of all the merit badges they have to earn. So, I think what we need to look at is how many volunteer hours are spent in our city. We have something that was celebrated at the last council meeting, two men painting a mural. Volunteers. We have Robin Macario's artwork all over the city. Volunteer. We have Girl Scouts painting utility boxes. Tennessee has a reputation as a volunteer state. Someday, I hope someone will say, "Garden Grove? Oh, yeah. That's the volunteer city." Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Bob Donaldson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving, and it was nice. I'm here to encourage people, at least that are watching on television, to be here on December 12th. That's an important meeting. We're going to be talking about short-term rentals in Garden Grove, and I just think people should come and hear. What I'm proud about the city of Garden Grove is that it's not legal to have a short-term rental in the city of Garden Grove. However, we have some people that just violate the law, and that's a sad situation. You know, you have the code, and they know what the code is, because, you know, I asked a couple of years ago what the code was for short-term rentals, when we had the disaster going over in the city of Anaheim, and it said it was restricted here. But you could see, when you go around the areas, that you've got people that completely disregard it, and it's my understanding, some of them have been hit with a fine lately, which is good. I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to stop these people, because they make a lot of money, and we've got to let people know that people want to violate the law. And I just, I just think they're greedy owners, you know? And a lot of them don't even live in the city of Garden Grove. You know, like I think one of the ones that you find, I think the owner lives in Mission Viejo, not even, you know, and the same thing happened, like I say, in Anaheim. These people come in, they take over these short-term rentals, but they don't want to live near where they have the short-term rentals. And like I said, they make a lot of money. Unfortunately, Anaheim's going to be stuck with them, it looks like, at least August of 2019. So, you know, because they made the mistake of trying to legalize or permit them, and that was a huge mistake that they have been paying for ever since. And luckily, the city of Garden Grove hasn't done that, and we don't want it done. Like, if people come and try to say, "We'd like to have an ordinance supporting STRs," that'd be the worst thing that could happen to our community. It hurts our schools, you know, it hurts our businesses. I mean, Garden Grove, we're pushing, and it's been helpful to have all the hotels. We want more hotels in Garden Grove. We don't want these mini motels that are short-term rentals that are going to take the place of hotels that don't carry any of the regulations at the hotel, don't have workers, that are, you know, a lot of them are paid under the table, we see that, and they, you know, they're just, like I say, a cancer in our communities. We want our neighborhoods to remain that. I own a property over on Robert Lane. I've owned it since 1972. I might end up, once my kids get grown, or my grandkids get grown, I might be back in the house. Like I said, I was in Garden Grove from 1972 to 2003, when I moved about two-thirds of a mile away to Anaheim at Sherwood Village, but we'd still walk around the neighborhood, and it's really kind of odd. You can spot them, it's really, and the one street I keep talking about is Ricky. I thought that was Anaheim. I mean, it's right across from the convention, and the corner of West and Ricky, man, there's a revolving door there. And then you walk down Ricky, that one street, because it's, the advantage they have is two folds. They're close to Anaheim Convention Center, and a lot of people use, the convention people use it, and then they're also close to Disneyland. And so, they just fill, and like I say, on Ricky, I think there's six or seven of them on that one block soon as you turn off of West Street. And so, we're just hoping that, you know, we'll start this enforcement where every single week, if we see new cars, and they're easy to spot, most of them have keypads on the door, and of course, they have out-of-state plates in their driveway, and they turn, they turn over somewhat regularly. You walk around, you know, like my wife takes pictures of them, writes down, you know, how, that's how we track them, because you don't have, most people don't have that many guests coming from like 50 states, you know, coming in to visit them. You might have somebody, but you could kind of spot them, and like I said, it's, the district that's, it's actually District 5, where we're at is, well, it's close to Disneyland, so was yours, 6. So, 6 and 5 is probably where you're going to see most of them. And well, no, we've got it over, because you've got the party house, okay? So, I mean, so, and anybody that lives near them, you know, you never, you never want them around you. So, I just hope and encourage people to come out December 12th, and I appreciate all that you've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes oral communications. We'll recess, and we'll go to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Member O'Neill.
Here.
Member Tuha Wynn.
Here.
Member Bowie.
Here.
Member Klaufenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Wynn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with City Council, so we'll move on to consent items, basically just the receive and file of the minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second it.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
No other items, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sanitary District.
With that, could I ask the Clerk to call the roll, please?
Member O'Neill.
Here.
Member Tuha Wynn.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Bowie.
Here.
Member Klaufenstein.
Here.
Member Kim Wynn.
Here.
And Chair Beard.
Here. Well, with that, we've covered oral communications. Consent items would be just the minutes from October 24th, 2017. Entertained a motion?
Move to approve. Second it.
Motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 3A is an item for consideration. It's an award of a contract for Ramona Incorporated. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. This is an award of contract to Ramona Inc. for project number 7833, Trask Avenue, Newland Street Sewer Improvements Project, and we will have a staff report in a moment.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, tonight, we're being asked to award a contract to Ramona Incorporated for sewer work on Trask Avenue, Newland Streets. The proposed project will relieve capacities in the existing Trask Avenue and Newland Street, Josephine Street, and Stanford Avenue sewers. The work includes laying about 3,000, 3,200, actually, linear feet of new sewer line made out of petrified clay pipe. On October 23rd, seven bids were opened, or received and opened by the city clerk, with the lowest bid being from Ramona Incorporated for just over a million, well, about $1.6 million. Staff has reviewed the bid proposal for inconsistencies and compliance with city standards, and we are recommending the contract be awarded for that amount. This concludes staff's report. Available for any questions.
Any questions?
If we award the contract, when will work begin?
Work usually starts about 30 days after the award of the contract, so that unfortunately puts us in a bad time of the year, so we're looking at beginning of work more than likely the first of next year.
And how long's the project going to go?
This particular project is, I'm sorry, I don't have that. Oh, is it on? They're really delaying it till, okay. Yeah, it looks like about three months, so we're planning on completing it in May.
And this, this cost was already figured into the budget?
It's in our budget.
Yeah. Thank you. I'll move to approve it.
A second.
Motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Item 4 is managed from the board or the general manager. Seeing none, we'll move for adjournment to January 23rd, 2018. Back to council.
Thank you. That takes us to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3H are acted on simultaneously unless any council member would like to pull an item. Any polls or a motion?
I move the motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, takes us on to public hearings, item 4A.
Item 4A is an adoption of a resolution approving General Plan Amendment Number GPA 003-2017, and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. 2017, and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for property located at 12111 Buarro Street in Garden Grove. And Ms. Webb is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor Jones and City Council members, as Terry told you, item 4A is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve a general plan amendment, that's GPA 3 2017, and adopt a mitigated neg-deck. The general plan amendment is required to fix a mapping error that occurred when we were redoing the general plan in 2008. Planning staff reviewed the history and determined that a mapping error occurred when the general plan, the current general plan, 2030, was written. The map error changed multifamily residential properties, along with the Walton School site, to civic institutional. So, by amending the designation of the subject property back to medium-density residential, the site will be consistent between the general plan and the existing R3 zoning, and the appropriate development can occur. I gave you some handouts, and if you look at the first one, that's the current general plan map, and that shows the subject property and the surrounding parcels in the blue, which is the civic institutional. Of that designation, the civic institutional was added in 2008, and it was intended for educational uses, such as schools, hospitals, government facilities. Directly below the subject site is the large Walton Intermediate School, and so that was appropriate to become civic institutional. On the second page in the handouts, you can see the prior, well, you can't see it very clearly, but you can, this is the prior general plan land use designation map, Walton School and the parks are all green, because schools used to be considered open space, and we decided to pull them out in the current plan and make it civic institutional. So, and you can see that all those other blue parcels are in the rust brown, and that was the medium-density residential. So, the subject site was never in the open space, it has always been in the medium-density residential. We just got overzealous when we put the civic institutional on the Walton School. You can see, then, the next page, the aerials, that all those sites are built, they were built in the 60s and 70s with multifamily residential apartment buildings. So, on September 21, 2017, the Planning Commission reviewed this. They approved a site plan variance and tentative tract map to construct 17 attached townhouses in two buildings, and subdivide the site into a single parcel with condominiums, and they recommended adoption of a mitigated neg-deck and approval of the general plan amendment. You do have a yellow. We received a letter from the school district with concerns about stormwater runoff. I know that early in the process, the applicant began meeting with engineering staff to review the site plan and ensure there would be no increase in the flow of stormwater. The project will reduce impervious services from 96% on the site to 65%, thereby reducing the volume of runoff. The recommendation from Planning Commission is to conduct the public hearing, adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and adopt the attached resolution approving General Plan Amendment Number GPA 3 2017. That concludes my report, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff at this time?
I have one, I have one, I guess. So, on the key point there, you mentioned the pervious soil. Right now, a lot of that area is asphalt, correct? So, with this new building, what's not structure that has proper drainage will actually be landscape and have more chance to retain some of the runoff before it goes out, so...
It has a big front landscape setback, it has large open space areas, and then perimeter landscaping.
Yeah, I was looking on the, the current photo, and it mostly looks like, other than the buildings, it looks like hardscape, most of it.
Right, old swimming pool and lots of asphalt plain, plain areas.
Has there ever been, to your knowledge, any flooding issues next to the grass area of the school district property? I'm not aware of it.
Not that I...
I'm not aware of any.
No.
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff?
I was happy to have the school district question answered. That was going to be my main question.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing item, so we'll open the public hearing, and I do have a couple cards.
Thank you. I'm Tony Flores. So, regarding the, the open space, we're starting to lose quite a bit of it here in our city. I know you folks may haven't realized that, or be voting yes and all, and not really thinking on your own. You gotta take a look at what's happening around you. Take a peek, our open spaces is shrinking. I'm going to read something from Chapter 9 entitled Parks, Recreation, Open Space Element, this is from the city of Garden Grove. We've, we wanted to have five acres per thousand people. According to this document, we have .91 acres per thousand. This is a city document now. I didn't write this, this is, I just read it, this is yours. Talking about the acreage that's out there, again, on this particular page of this document in Table 92 entitled Open Space, the schools, 606, 67.2 acres, it just includes the public schools that are not currently in the joint use, so all this is all considered as open space. Every time we're trying to stuff 10 pounds of nonsense in a five-pound bag, we're losing open space. There's a lot of students here right now. By the time they become adults, there probably won't be open space if we continue on this trend. I think it's interesting that as we're speaking of open space, we're having an issue right now with our schools. I've been contacted by a few neighbors in West Garden Grove. They're trying to use Pacifica High School Garden Park, they're being chased off by some security outfit. I'm in communications with Dr. Mafia, we're at the school district right now, but we can't use the park, and it's part of this document. It even says here that we can use the schools as recreational areas. It's in here. We're not really paying attention to that. So, right now, that we're having that issue out there, we, again, losing our open space every time we build and put something in it, it's not coming back. One of the questions I have, too, this, this Pinnacle Residential versus Borrow Partners LLC. In the documents, it's Borrow Partners LLC, but tonight, it says that the owner or the application is Pinnacle Residential. I just want to caution you folks, I haven't had time to do a lot of research, because I just caught this earlier today, but if any of you, or four of you or more of you have actually taken monies from these folks, I believe there's going to be a conflict of interest, and you may not have the proper quorum. But I'm going to go back and look to see who's received what, which one I want to take a look at that. Regarding our revenues, if you're saying we need to put more people in here to get more revenues, well, let's start with our water bill. My understanding is that we're using $2.4 million of our water to pay for general services like our police and fire. I've mentioned this before, I know you all are staring at me like I'm probably from the moon, but take a look at your own documents every now and then. Thank you.
Glad to hear you. Full age benefits. Good evening, council, mayor, people of Garden Grove. I am David Lauterborn, I live at 12251 Hampton Avenue for over 50 years. November 1963, my wife and I, with our one-year-old son, moved into the home at 12251 Hampton Avenue. So, we've been there a long time. The termites and us are friends. The yards were covered with ivy, the backyard was filled with tumbleweed, gophers, an old peach tree, you name it, that's when we moved in. That was the day that Kennedy got shot, by the way. It's not the best thing to remember, but it does bring up a date. Our residents around us has been, have been getting replaced by two-story, multi-story structures, and way back when we wanted to expand on our house, and we were turned down by the Garden Grove Planning Group, because we were zoned for that. I talked to the people that used to be in the mobile park over there, and Mr. Jones, you remember that, the people that lived in the trailer park out there on Harbor and Chapman, where the, before the hotels planted their roots there. Senior citizens filled those mobile homes. They were in the 70s to 90s, and Garden Grove opted them to leave the premises and go find residents elsewhere. 50 cents for the summer, our kids used to pay to go to Kids Haven, that's that little pond on West Street, to go fishing over there during the summer, and they could fish all day for 50 cents. West Street and Chapman Avenue was a pretty nice place for all of us to share the family living. Playing ball in the streets was common. My kids, I had a son when we first moved in, he was one-year-old, and a daughter came along, and we raised them there, where they went to CC Violet and Walton School, and later on to Santiago. And they all graduated, and pretty nice community. My neighbors are pretty much all gone. Being 80 years old, you don't keep, people around you don't stay too long. This development, I find we're breaking the law, or the city's breaking the law, because they've already started the project. Page School has already moved out. It's a private school that used to teach students from the sixth grade over down to kindergarten. What's going on? Are we more interested in the development of apartment houses than we are of our kids? That Page School taught a pretty good, there's some pretty good students out there that went to Page School and advanced themselves to the future. Why aren't we doing something about that? When we say breaking the law, well, being as old as I am, again, I can remember where we had a couple of council people that didn't reside in Garden Grove, but they took the chairs from council, and after they were found out, they decided to leave. And one of them is still around. Nobody fined them, nobody got their money back from them. Why are we letting people break the law without justice being served? I know when I break the law, justice gets served. Because I'm a poor man, I can't afford to hire a lawyer and go down and fight this case. I'm asking you guys to consider the people around there. These 17 units that you're going to put on Browell, where are you going to park the 34 cars, at least 34 cars, that these people will use? That's figuring that we have two individuals per unit, and they each have a car to go to work and whatnot. Come on now. Our hotels, I've complained about this before, they, hotels come by, and their buses park on our streets, the car, the overflow of the hotel parking lot, adequate parking. I remember Mr. Broadwater, adequate parking, that was the engineer's answer for people to come there. Come on now. We can't keep breaking the law. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any further comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And then, council members, questions, comments, whatever you'd like to do.
Sure. Ms. Webb, if we could have just a little understanding about the parking, perhaps, for this project?
I haven't thought about it in a while, let's see. They're meeting the code requirement, which is 3.25 per unit. So, they have, everyone has a two-car enclosed garage, then they have visitor parking along
55 parking spaces on site.
And this parking is regular, meeting regular parking requirement, right? Not, not reduced due to low income, you know, high density?
It meets the parking requirement.
Keep in mind, we're not considering the project. We're doing a general, we're working on a general plan amendment. Okay, any other comments, questions, motion? I'll move adoption of the resolution and approving General Plan Amendment GPA 003 2017, and adoption of a mitigated neg-deck for the property located at 12111 Buarro Street. Is that the right action? Or am I in a sub thing? Yeah, okay. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 4B.
Item 4B is an adoption of a resolution amending the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. And Mr. Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Department of California Water Resources requires the city to update and adopt an urban water management plan every five years. The updated plan ensures the city will provide for future needs, that we will be prepared for water shortage shortages, and that we will comply with all applicable laws and regulations. As you know, the state required the city to reduce our water usage by 20% for the drought. You should know that we are still about 20% below our normal water usage when compared to about, you know, 15, 20-year-old figures. As mentioned, the adoption of this plan is a requirement of the state. To adopt a plan, the council must first conduct a public hearing, then adopt the attached resolution, and finally, direct staff to submit to the urban water management plan to the state. This concludes staff's report, and available if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, this also is a public hearing item, so I'd like to open the public hearing. I have no cards, but is there anyone wishing to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council members?
Move approval?
Second it.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, moving on to items for consideration, item 5A.
Item 5A is an adoption of a resolution approving the submittal of traffic signal synchronization improvement projects to the Orange County Transportation Authority for funding under the Comprehensive Transportation Funding Program. And Mr. Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's staff is asking the city council to adopt a resolution approving the submittal of traffic signal synchronization improvement projects. These projects are being submitted for possible grant funding from the Orange County Transportation Authority under the Comprehensive Transportation Funding Program. The regional projects being submitted are Garden Grove Boulevard from Valley View to Bristol Street, and Cotella from the I-605 to Jamboree Street. Our portion of the Garden Grove project is about $2.5 million, and our local match is $4.5 million. Our portion of the Cotella project is $50,000, and our match would be only for $10,000. The...
The total grant awarded for both projects is almost two point six million dollars and will require matching funds of almost half a million. The city's matching funds will come from Measure M2 fair share monies and will not impact the general fund. This concludes staff's report. I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, comments?
Can you clarify for public, I have heard some question regarding the benefits of this traffic synchronization, I believe there is, but some people from the public seem to wonder about it. Can you clarify that for, for the publics?
The purpose of traffic synchronization is to ensure a uniform flow of traffic along the thoroughfare. In this case, we're looking at east-west streets. Those streets have become compacted over the years and that's why this, these synchronization projects keep coming up, is that as cities develop and there's new destinations that are created, traffic patterns tend to change. Also, our freeway improvements or even construction works will actually have a significant impact on traffic patterns. The purpose of this, we'll move the vehicles along in an orderly pace and with the overlying hope is that they'll spend less time stopped. And when you reduce the amount of vehicle downtime in terms of being stopped at a signal, you save motorists in terms of gas and you also save in terms of emissions. So you're not creating as much smog theoretically. And a lot of the work that they do here, we have the benefit of, they upgrade our systems. So there's a portion of this, it's actual engineering and that's a minor portion. The bigger portion is that they're going to be replacing and upgrading our controller cabinets so that they all talk to each other. And that's really where you see the benefit in this particular project, at least for an engineering standpoint.
I do not travel east and west as much as north and south, so I do not have much of feel for Garden Grove Boulevard or Catella from Valley View to Bristol. However, I travel a lot north and south between four oh five and February twenty-two. And I realize that in the last few years, traffic there during pickup is horrible. Sometime it took forty-five minutes just to travel on Euclid from four oh five to February twenty-two. And with that delay in traffics, there is associated with it the cost of business, the cost of potential people that can come and shop in Garden Grove. And I think so, and therefore I think that is a real strong argument for intangible benefit. I do not know how much to put the, an amount of dollar on it. But forty-five minutes each day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, I believe, add up a lot more than the cost of the city matching fund. So I just want to, to, you know, to clarify this, this point to the publics and in case if we need. I don't see any reason why we would spend maybe a hundred or a couple hundred thousand dollars to quantify it, to see how much the dollar saving is. But I believe the, the benefit in term of financial would be tremendous for merchants in, in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Bill, could you comment on the, for the public's knowledge on the, our portion of it, even that has been budgeted and a lot of it is from grant, federal money, isn't it, or grant money?
No, it's like actually for Measure M2.
Measure M2?
Yeah, so it's on the sales tax.
But it's not coming out of the general fund?
No, sir.
Yeah. People get excited, you see that, those large figures and that's about a fifth of the budget for the whole, actually what our city is, you said over two point six million dollars, right? Is it gonna be in the grants?
Yeah, the grant's a substantial amount of money.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that that's, that four hundred and sixty-four is not coming out of our general budget, general plan, I should say. Thank you.
Go for it.
Second.
Call the vote. Okay, ordinances for second reading and adoption, six A.
Ordinance number twenty-eight eighty-eight, presented for second reading and adoption entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Amendment Number A twenty-one, two thousand seventeen to amend portions of Chapters nine point oh four, definitions and nine point eighteen, mixed-use regulations and development standards of Title Nine of the City of Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to uses within the civic center mixed-use zones that involve entertainment and/or alcohol sales or consumption and permissible encroachments within set packs."
Any comments or do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, moves on to matters. We do have one agenda, so seven A is discussion of theft and scavenging of recycling materials from residential garbage containers. I don't know how we kick this off. This is a matter, so I think this is your show.
I could start it off and I'd be happy to. First of all, thanks for bringing it back, colleagues. And thank you, staff, for this additional information we have before us. Scavenging policies across cities in Orange County, we see the nearby cities, and I'm looking particularly at the corrective actions here, where it's a misdemeanor in our city. Just going down the list, Anaheim has a verbal warning, notice to appear, a verbal warning in orange, Santa Ana, verbal warning, admin citation, verbal warning in Westminster, verbal warning and admin citation Stanton, Waylon Park, verbal warning, admin citation, Fulton, verbal warning, admin citation, and Irvine, verbal warning. So with that, the speaker earlier brought up some good points and I just wanted to clarify mostly the corrective action part of it. It lists a misdemeanor for us as a city, but I need some even more clarification of that. I was reading through the, I looked through the internet, I looked through other cities. As you can see, surrounding cities have something on the books related to enforcement or it's a crime in some fashion to savage and pick through trash. We've heard about the explanations of what that is, what's out on your curb, it's not really yours, but the city can enforce people getting in there if they're not supposed to, that's a crime. But my point last time was the misdemeanor versus an admin citation. So I was reading through the provisions of the sanitary district code and that has the penalties portion. So I just want to be clear, and then the last chapter mentions the general penalty and with that, it identifies as a misdemeanor for any infraction for the sanitary district codes, regulations, but also goes down to say infractions. And it does spell out some, some fines in the same category as admin citations. Is there a distinction between those infractions and admin citations?
Yes, there is a distinction. The infractions and the code of regulations are criminal penalties. And so you get an infraction and it's actually a citation to the court. You either pay, it's like a parking ticket or a traffic ticket. So you have the choice to pay it or you can contest it in court. If it's contested in court, then it's set for pre-hearing, like a regular criminal trial. The difference with infractions and misdemeanors is that for infractions, there is no jail time associated with it. It's simply a dollar fine. And because there is no possibility of jail time, there is no right to counsel and, you know, our office normally wouldn't appear, but the officer that issued the citation has to appear. And if they don't appear, then there is no witnesses to the crime and the judge will actually dismiss the citation. The administrative citation is a civil citation, so it's not criminal at all. And they, it's basically a citation, they get a fine and it's a debt to the sanitary district. If they don't pay, then you can go to collections, they can appeal it, and then it goes through a administrative hearing where they can contest it. But again, there is no exposure to jail time, it's simply monetary fine, it's civil in nature. The contesting an administrative citation is an informal hearing by a hearing officer. And if the person that received the citation does not like the decision of the hearing officer, they can then appeal that to the superior court, but it's treated as a civil case, not as a criminal case.
Okay, so the way it's written in the, in the sanitary district codes, it's a, it's still a criminal case?
It's criminal. So the sanitary district code only has criminal enforcement of the regulations.
Okay, what would it take to make it an admin citation? We have to do an ordinance, city ordinance?
It would be an ordinance of the sanitary district adding the administrative citation enforcement. It would basically be a chapter very similar to what the city has in its municipal code on administrative citations.
Okay. That's my question. Any comments?
Interesting dialogue, just, I mean, it seems like the criminal side has more teeth to it or more than the, but the admin mechanism is cheaper to enforce. It's, it's not realistic to pay our police officers to go patrol this and spend time and attention to it relative to the other things that they have to consider. But from an administrative standpoint, if we had code enforcement or whatever going out and looking at it, it would be cheaper to patrol it and enforce it, but probably not as collectible.
Is that who, is that who that would be then if we went to the administrative side of things? Does that then put the owners back on code, which is not where it currently lies now?
Well, code enforcement, can they write a criminal citation?
Yes.
Is this infraction, that's what they use?
Our code enforcement officers are authorized to issue criminal citations. They have to go through, it's not the same, they cannot, so issuing a criminal citation is an arrest, but it's a notice to appear. So if the person signs that they agree to appear at the designated arraignment date, then they are now taken into custody. The difference between a police officer and a code enforcement officer is that a police officer can actually arrest a person and take them, you know, book them into jail. Whereas our code enforcement officers can issue a citation and if the person decides that they're not going to agree to appear, then a code enforcement officer has to call PD to make the arrest. So they can issue it, release on non-recognition by the signature that they promised to appear. And that's the extent of the authority that our code enforcement officers have on the criminal side.
Councilmember Beard, if I may, just for clarification, is this a fact-finding mission at this time?
Yeah, you know, I wanted to see what was on the books, I wanted clarification on that. I wanted to see if that would be of value or help in catching these, or have another, as I said before, a tool in the toolbox for police or even code enforcement to have better results in discouraging or detriment to, to people going out there, deterrent. In my reading, in my reading of this, I think a lot of the citations or misdemeanors are not, are not undertaken because it's a long laborious process, that's why the warnings come into place. That was my reading from other cities. So I think with this sort of in-between penalty, let's call it that, that this may have more effect on the, possibly on the perpetrators who go around. I mean, obviously people don't like to see, I don't like having people go through my trash for whatever reason. I think it, if, if we see something happening, say something, that's what I want, it's an education process too, to let citizens know that, you know, it's not okay for people to rummage through your trash. People think, ah, can they do that? It's only trash, but, you know, it's a disservice to the city, to other citizens, there's other potential health and safety problems. So I want to make awareness. It's, it's an ongoing problem. I'm not suggesting a task force or stakeouts, but common, common people or people who commonly do this as an offense, to, we have some action and maybe this will help mitigate that.
If I may add, with respects to the civil enforcement, if the person does not have any assets or any money to pay, we cannot really enforce it. On, on infractions, if they don't pay and you get three infractions and you still don't pay, then I have the option to increase that to a misdemeanor. So after three infractions, you can then be cited for misdemeanor, which does carry up to six months in, in county jail. So on the criminal side, you have the option for someone who is unwilling or unable to pay a monetary fine to actually ultimately serve time in jail. On the civil side, we really don't, if they don't have any assets because we send it to collection, or, you know, we, if we get a judgment in a civil case, that judgment becomes an automatic lien on their assets. But if they have no properties, no assets, we, you know, we simply cannot collect.
Yeah, to me, the biggest deterrent would be to that person. So, you know, monetary fine isn't gonna affect them if there's never any consequences. So coming up with the best deterrent that has the least amount of time involved for the city, whether our police or code enforcement is doing that, but we gotta come up with the right deterrent so they won't do it, possibly facing jail time. But like, like the city attorney said, most of the people going through those cans, you know, trying to enforce something on them is tough. But again, I, I think awareness of it, I know what we do on our street is, if you, if you can not put your cans out till the morning of, I know a lot of people on my street recycle before it gets to the can. And then politely ask someone, you know, please leave if you're, you know, don't go through my trash cans. Most of the people I've ran into, I've actually told them, please don't go through my cans and they'll move on. And, and I, and most of my neighbors do the same thing. So it was kind of a self-policing thing, but I know it can be a problem, especially now, the problems we're having, a lot more transient people coming up and down our streets every day. So it's tough to keep up with it and it gets frustrating because we're not used to that. But just everybody look out for everybody and do what we can and then maybe we'll come up with a, a way to deter it.
Yeah. Can I add one more?
Please.
I'd like, I, I think I'm okay with the infractions. A couple of points, the speaker brought up one, a couple of other things. I think public education is important beyond this council meeting. Maybe we could look at the website to work with community services to have this as a notation. I know I went through other cities, they have anti-scavenging ordinances, but what they're really giving is information that this is illegal, these are the recommendations, what, this is what you could do as a citizen to help prevent it, you know, put your trash cans out at a certain time. Maybe that's the, the best way of alerting, informing citizens, but letting, letting basically know it's a crime and there are penalties to it. And I, I, I don't think the administrative, I like what you said, administrative citation, the civil side, if a person has no assets, what benefit is that? The deterrent is, you know, you're penalized by jail time if, if it goes that far. So I would hopefully like to suggest maybe we look at updating or having something in the city website, webpage to inform as informational, and we have other informational, a lot of good informational items in Public Works and all our community services. So if we could add this as a feature, just to let people know, I think that could be a benefit. But I'm glad I brought up this topic, I got educated in this and one of the cities do. And this goes all the way back, I was reading through some of the literature about nineteen ninety when Councilman Bob Denson brought it up and there were issues back then. So I think there are a lot more issues now related to people picking through trash. And so it's even more prevalent today.
Maybe we could even add it in the wa, the water bill, you know, the, the information that we have, that you have right here, online and actually in that water bill flyer that comes bimonthly, a little education on that.
Just one other point, the speaker talked about the police and maybe we have to relay that, I'm not saying this is what the police do, but there may be instances where the police aren't fully informed of the laws. I assume they are. And I'm, and if we have to have briefings, if this came up as an item, see something, say something. You may be receiving more calls related to this through public education, so. And I know they, they do the enforcement and the warnings, if they work, great. If we have organized scavengers, we, they're probably already aware of that.
Just one last quick question for city, for legal council is, if we were to add administrative citation fines, it's still a crime, right? That wouldn't negate the underlying fact that it's also a criminal offense?
Correct. So, the way on the city municipal code we have it is, the administrative citation is an option, it's not in lieu of. So, the officer has the option to either issue the civil or issue the criminal. So, it really depends on the crime and the officer's discretion on the field.
Got it. Okay, are we done with that one? For now. So, matters from council. Chris, does he have anything? You good?
I'm good.
All right, then. I'll make it, I'll make it brief. Today is Giving Tuesday, and so I wanted to bring up an opportunity to give through the holiday season. The Garden Grove Neighborhood Association is having their eighth annual Adopt a Senior and Vet Community Program, and the goal is to provide seniors and vets with gift cards and cash donations or check donations so that they can obviously buy things over the Christmas season for themselves, family, and just to have resources throughout the year. And you can drop off your donations, if you'd like to, here on Main Street to experience vinyl doors and windows, that's Rick and Susan Lurma's business. You can drop it off, you can mail it, and if you have more information, or if you need more information, you can go to the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association Facebook page, and the flyer is posted there, and so it's, again, a great opportunity to give this season.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, do you?
I don't have any.
Okay, I have two things. One is just this, this coming Sunday, December 3, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. is the 2017 Winter Toy Drive on Main Street in Garden Grove. We're expecting well over 1,000 people. There's going to be an exotic car show. Unlike the typical Main Street car show, these will be Mayboks and Lamborghinis and very interesting, very expensive fancy cars that your kids will be allowed to jump in and take pictures with, and there will be models and booths and free food and giveaways and a lot of other fun festivities for the family, so please bring a toy, or two, or 10, and come out and be charitable, and give to the Winter Toy Drive and support needy children around who could use the help. And last, I would, I'll defer after this to the city manager for comments, but we'll close tonight in memory of Ho Young Chung, who was a former Garden Grove City Council member, passed away on November 15, 2017, in Garden Grove. He had a long history of community activism. He was the first Asian American to run for and be elected to the Garden Grove City Council in 1992, and served through 1998. During his time on council, he served as Mayor Protem from '96 through '99. He also served his community on the Board of Directors for the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce. He was a member of the Orange County Human Relations Commission, founding member and president of the Korean Chamber of Commerce, and president of the Korean-American Association of Orange County. His personal achievements were impressive, as his thirst for knowledge drove him to pursue several degrees. He received a bachelor's degree in English at Hunkook University of Foreign Studies in South Korea, a master's degree in political science at Korean University, a master's degree in business administration at James Madison University in Virginia, and a doctor of Business Administration degree at Pacific States University. He leaves behind his wife, sonny, and their four daughters, Anne, Marah, Susan, and Lydia. Garden Grove was fortunate to have had Ho Chung serve, and he will be missed by all who knew him, including myself. Thank you. And with that, I'll defer to city manager Scott Stiles for any comments.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. I did want to update you and the public that we've recently completed an independent study that we, that we completed. The purpose of the study was to try and identify community priorities as part of our ongoing effort to maintain the quality of life services that our constituents rely on. I really want to take this moment to thank all the members of the public who took time to participate in the survey, and mention that the survey results we're going to post shortly. And we're going to spend a lot of time in the next coming six months, really trying to engage with our citizens and our community on a variety of ways about what's important to them as we're going into the second year of our budget, and we're updating that, so we really are going to spend some time getting out in the community and asking citizens what's important to them, what we should be thinking about as we're going forward. So, I wanted to mention that. And then, in the spirit of the holiday, we want to encourage the community to participate in its end-of-the-year buying Garden Grove campaign. Black Friday goes big from now until Friday, December 15. Garden Grove shoppers who collect $50 or more in total register receipts from any local business can win $500 cash or a one-night stay at the Great Wolf Lodge, Southern California. Just save your receipts and bring them to the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce on Main Street by December 15. It's a big effort that they're promoting to support our local businesses. You can visit the city's website or social media sites where we're trying to promote this, and just remember that when you shop local, you help keep needed tax dollars at home that go towards public safety, roads, parks, and other quality of life needs in the community, so I would say good luck to anybody who's out there submitting their receipts to the Chamber of Commerce. And then finally, I wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody noted this, but our 11th Annual Garden Grove Tree Lighting Ceremony, I think, is this, a week from today.
Yeah.
December 5, at 6:30 p.m., so come on out, it's, I've been to two of them now, and they're always a lot of fun.
Yeah, also this Saturday is Winter Fest at Atlantis Park.
So, we've got a lot to do that night.
I will miss all of this, because I will be in the meditation retreat this next week, the entire next week.
Thanks, good for you. We could all use a little of that. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.[1638.63]